It's time to call the meeting to order roll call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Joelness.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Baggerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or allegiance to these? Are there any? Yeah, Tom.
We don't have a Deanna.
Wilmer Ten.
That's Wilmer Ten.
Wilmer Ten, number eight, letter eight.
Oh, that's right after, okay. My mistake.
All right, we'll go into the work session with a presentation from Wilmer Ten.
Thank you, Mayor Reese. Julie, we'll try, I didn't realize you wouldn't be here in person, so we'll try to get that set to you. I'm not the most technical savvy guy, as you can tell by the fact that you have yellow folders that bring us the color of spring. But I, we didn't have time to do a presentation. I'm sure like BKV is right at the top of the screen. This is a little old school, and I appreciate your patience with us for that. We were, we had quite enough time to throw something fancier together. Again, thank you for having Wilmer Ten here tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to talk to the city council and others regarding the ultimate for the city hall and the community center. And with me tonight are two of my partners, Ken Beam is back here, C. Beck here, and Ty Twish is behind us. Like I said, please excuse the kind of old fashioned thing, but the thing is, we're not charging for this presentation. You guys can have that. If you can make up the difference of cost when you decide on your ideas, you're going to do it. Well, that squared up then. I want to give everybody a little bit of history because some of you are new to this process, terms of this idea. And that is back in October of 2020, a lot of you council members remember this. We were in the middle of pandemic. Kelly and I met all of you up at the county office building where you have the meetings up there. And we talked about this proposal. Proposal, if you remember, is using the JCPenney site at the Uptown Wilmer Mall to put both the community center and the city hall in one location. You probably, if you've stumbled through the folder, you probably have seen kind of the idea or else refreshed yourself with that idea. At that time, the city council, which was not, Tom and Justin, you were not on there then, or Carl, but the city council were eight zero for us to go ahead and continue to work with city staff to develop a concept for the JCPenney site to do city hall and the community center. So after that, Kelly and I and others returned to the community center, met with Reda Dean there, kind of got a feel for what the programming would be like at the community center. Then just a little bit of work with city hall to see what needed for space considerations there. Then in January of 2021, Brian Ramis was the city administrator. Brian emailed me and said, Deanna, I think your idea, the Wilmer Ten idea still makes sense. We just have to find a way to fund it. And at that time, you know, he said, we're just, the hang up seems to be how to fund it. Do we use some cash? Obviously, there's $2 million of local option sales tax available for the community center. And then I think the idea was maybe some cash, some bonding. In March of 2021, when Justin and Tom got on the city council or elected, we, I dropped off some packets. You may remember this at your homes or I mailed them to you to kind of go over why we thought it was a good idea to use this. Have you considered this as a location? Then in July of 2021, Leslie started, we met and so I wanted to get her up to date to make sure that she knew what this word was. She was coming from Spicer, and I wasn't sure how intuitive she was to the idea. So we had a conversation about that. And one of the questions Leslie asked me, and I'll just say this out loud against everyone. She said, Deanna, when you think of a city hall, where do you think it should be? And I said, I said, usually you think downtown. The city council decided to look up at North Side, the community center is now. We felt that that opened this up to anyone to come up with a better idea than what we thought that North Side of the community center is now. Which is that I feel that was a good spot for a city hall, community center, you know, largely because of 60 mile an hour traffic, et cetera. And the presentations that we did in the community, the response back from the seniors was always favored because they liked the idea of having a spot where you're driving 30 miles an hour on residential streets or city streets, like for example, Fifth Street, to access the community center rather than trying to make sure it's out from 71 at 60 miles an hour. So then it kind of went, the summer of 2022, we hadn't heard very much. Then we heard through the grapevine that there's some sites that were preferred by the city council, of which the JCPenney one was not. We're not sure why we, it wasn't, why or why not it wasn't included. No wonder we got back to us on that. So we're happy to be here today to be able to present what we think is a good alternative. And then in December of 21 or 22, this last December, this article was central to be on, by you, I think. Talking about the ideas there. And I have to admit, we're a little surprised to see a price tag on those. So the idea of having a 28,000 square foot community center for $13 million, I'm using the lower cost ones here. In a 32,000 square foot city hall for $15 million, for $12, $28 million, didn't really resonate too well with us because we had offered this project for $10 million two years ago. So, well, again, that's, I'm happy to be here today, and I was happy that Leslie called me last Thursday because it gives us a chance to talk about this again and maybe explain to some people that are not as familiar with the, with the project from two years ago. So if we get to our packets, your yellow packets, the first thing you're going to see is the concept that we have for what it looks like when you walk in. So this would be the walking in from the east door of JCPenney, which we're actually going to move over to center it up with the rest of the mall. So you'll walk in and the idea was, because it's not going to be downtown, the idea was to put an uptown mall, but to bring elements from downtown into this, into the foyer area. It's important to have a gathering space. The old saying is the best meeting of the day is the meeting after the meeting. So here's an opportunity for people to meet after the meeting. Plus, in any large events in the senior center, the idea is to get overflowed here into this foyer area, which has an atrium on top of it. So again, just imagine the JCPenney space with this, with an atrium, with a wide open area to walk in, and people can gather in the area in the middle. The other thing that I wanted to talk about in the next page is kind of the overall site plan. So one of the things I want you to look at is the community center side, which is on the south side of the building. So you're on a, some of you will pick up right away this how this sits, but east door faces Fifth Street. Fifth Street being built as a new corridor running north and south, parallel First Street, taking some of the traffic off First Street. So if you look at that little gray box that's inside the community center side, that is what the size of the current community center is superimposed on top of that space. And then the middle, you see the atrium area, and to the right, you see the city hall area. Now, what we like about this idea is that we gave it an opportunity here to green up some of the space on the mall. As we know, as all of you, I hope, know, the city mall parking lot, or not city mall, the Uptown Mall parking lot is A, way too big, and B, in terrible disrepair. So how this works on this site is that you would actually own three to four acres around this building, the JCPenney site. Rockstep Wilmer has worked with the city and county to develop separate parcels on this site, as I'm sure you all are aware. And this parcel is roughly three to four acres. And so we have an opportunity here to design some, we have a local art, this first run at this, and this is again, two years old, is the idea to have a cul-de-sac area surround about there in front to drop off the front. So be able to walk into the main atrium there to the city hall, then the left, you do the community center. And as you keep going straight to the west, that's where you'd walk into the mall. And so one of the questions that people have asked us is what would happen, you know, if the mall was no longer there? Well, this could be you close off the door on the west, and this would be a standalone site on three to four acres. Another person asked me, why the parking lot is so horrible? Yes, we know that, but on your three or four acres, you'd have a new parking lot. And then on this site here, you see the community garden we have across Fifth Street. Then again, this is from two years ago. There's room in the southeast corner here from mall to put green space or a garden and apartment there because you would own that whole area with that edge. The way this site is set up right now and the way that they've designated it, there's about 180 to 200 parking space in the middle. On the south side of the community center, and I think that's important, remember it's the south side. In the winter time, it'd be sun on that all the time. You could have a canopy there if you want for drop off and pickup. But I think it's important that there'd be windows that face south, sunlight to the south, and easy access for people to drop off people at the community center. You would have to work with staff to kind of right size all your offices and that kind of thing. And we have one drawing, took a run at probably two years ago, but we didn't want people to get focused in on, we may have picked to put the mayor's office or the city administrator's office in certain corner, or maybe current people don't like that idea. So we did not bring that to you because this, we thought this may be more of a high level, if the concept of the idea type of meeting anyone. The next picture gives you kind of an idea of the outside. So the goal here is how do you take the JCPenney box that Troy Construction built, put on the mall in 1970s? How do you change that into a more vibrant looking and welcoming community center in the city hall? So that's our first conceptual idea. Up in the top, obviously, you can see what JCPenney looks like now, and you can see what we think the future of it could look like. My last picture I have in my packet for you is, just to give you an idea of proximity. Location of this, even though it's not a downtown city hall, it truly is in the middle of the city, however. I was going to quickly GIs how far it is from the First Street Bridge down to the site, and then from the site down to Target, but I would just guess this is about halfway. So location wise, I'm not sure how you can beat it, just for the fact that it's easy to get to, it's by, by the four major grocery stores. It's by the clinic. It's by the Skylark Mall, I mean, it's right here in the middle of town. So that was the one of the things that, so we just did that circle that you see there is a one mile radius from the JCPenney site. Page one of the printed documents, I'm not going to read all this to you because obviously, here's the thing that I remember. So we brought this up before, two years ago. We looked at it this way, that economic impact this will make. You know, and I, you know, obviously, Wilmer Ten can't promise this, but if you develop a city hall or a community center on Fifth Street, there'll be more to follow. It creates activity, creates people to be driving up Fifth Street more often, accessing the community center, going to city hall, easy for people to find. There's two outlets on the east side of Herberters that could be purchased, so there's at least one that's south of JCPenney that you could purchase. The possible developer could purchase for restaurants, et cetera. The next head, next topic is malls are not what they used to be. We all know that with the increase in online shopping, people do not frequent malls so much as they used to. And malls over the country are getting repurposed. They're being repurposed as the medical facilities, other, maybe even put restaurants inside them, government uses. Sometimes even some malls have gone residential. Mall concept that was so popular 50, 60s and 70s, 80s, much different than it's today. And largely, I think that if you'd asked Rockstep, this mall, probably square footage wise, is much larger than it needs to be. So for them to be able to sell off a parcel, I mean, for a mall developer to be able to fill all of Herberters, who's 80,000 square feet, and all of this at 52,000 square feet, could be a big task. The city, the city agreed or decided to do this, I think that shows a commitment to repurpose. Obviously, it's the largest retail center in the city. And the idea here is that no one's asking for tax increment financing or any kind of tax rebates. You're just asking for, if you're going to do this anyway and build this city hall or community center, why not put it someplace where it might spur other economic development? Page two, I talked about, we talked a little about the location. I'm sure you did a map of four, what's the center of the city? And that's, you know, pretty obvious to all of us that live here. Uptown, the, at least part of Uptown would be greened up and softened up. I think that that's important, that maybe that side of the Fifth Street, you'd see a little bit more of a softer look with some green space, trees, et cetera. And truly, with the three or four acres available there, and I keep saying three or four, because I don't know exactly the minute, I think it's like 3.6 or 7, I can't remember. You could tear up whatever asphalt you'd want to do, to make that green as you want to be, yet keep as many parking spots as we think you might need. My next paragraph is the repurpose. Repurpose is the buzzword for everyone. Recycle or repurpose, you use, here's an opportunity to use a building that's already built to repurpose it into something that we need. Accessibility, it's, no matter where you are in Wilmer, it's easy to find, obviously, we're the biggest retail space in the city. As everyone knows, Uptown Mall is located, you can see it from Wilmer Avenue when you drive by the Junior High. You can see it from, on 19th Avenue, from the brand new, soon to be open car wash, you can see, you'll be able to see city hall from there. So top of page seven, top of page three, I've got moving made easy. What I mean by that is that if you're actually going on the north 71, what are you going to do at the senior center or community center while you tear it down? Or if you're going to reuse or repurpose it where the city hall is now, you have to move people. A project like this, and I'm sure some of the projects you're going to consider from BKV are the same thing. You could stay in your spot while it's being built and move it at the end, other than the fact that on the north 71 site, that one, it probably was a plan, I don't know if there was a plan, but I wasn't sure where the community center was going to go. Next, next topic, opportunities. When we talked to Britta about this two and a half years ago, she was excited about the possibility of being able to catch people that walk in the mall all the time, but never go to the senior center. And people, we all know that the same users of the community center are walkers in the mall. There's also walkers in the mall that never go to the community center. Should be able to catch those people, market to them, signage up front, whatever it might be, to make use of that. And say, hey, you should come and check out some of these activities. The other thing that I know that at the community center, she talks about when people, sometimes they try to walk around outside the community center in the winter time, or also go to the mall, or try to do laps inside. Here, you've got a built in, I think it's one point, one mile walking track inside Uptown, Uptown Wilmer already. So you'd walk out the west door that goes into the space, walk out the west door into the mall proper and do your laps right there. The other thing is that, I don't know if many of you knew this, but the village was looking at moving into the Herberters Home Store. Because when they heard the seniors in the community center would be at, possibly be in the mall, at JCPenney site, there was a deal almost struck with Rockstep to put the village there. And that has gone off the table now, partially, I'm sure, because that idea of cross generational education or learning. They knew, they found out that this wasn't going, thought that wasn't going to happen. Their idea, United Ways idea, it's kind of dialed back and going into the Herberters Home Store. I know a lot of people, there's some people here that knew that, probably some of you didn't. And then I think lastly, it's just cost savings. I think that, I'm pretty confident that, you know, it's not 10 million today like it was in 2021. We all know that because of the cost. We haven't had a chance to, to go through the same cost this out yet. But if you look on page four, and I presented this to you back in October of 2020, about some of the permission statement on Wilmer. And if you look on the bottom there, there's seven community values and permission statement. And one is fiscal responsibility. If this doesn't scream fiscal responsibility, I'm not sure what does. We think that we could probably get this done for at least $10 million less than what you have in the proposal from the paper in December of 2022. Back when we were talking with you before, the plan then was, Mayor Pelvin expressed this to us, was that this $10 million, Deanna, would probably use 2 million of the local option sales tax, 4 million in cash that you have in reserves, and $4 million to bond. It's trying not to fit, the $10 million is not going to fit today with the cost. But we certainly think that this is probably an alternative that is to save the taxpayers some money. We, just to let you know where we are in this, we have an agreement with Rockstep that we can buy the mall, but not the mall. Now, that'd be great. We're just, we're just going to, we have an agreement with Rockstep to buy the JCPenney area and the three to four acres around it. And just, and just like we talked about two and a half years ago, our attorney from Rinkin Union talked with Robert Scott, your attorney, about the best way to do this. And back then, there was some talk about policing and purchasing. And those two in November of 2020, they discussed that the best idea would be that there's a way to get this done by, by Wilmer Ten buying, JCPenney building it to suit how you want it, and then selling it to the city at the end. And so that would mean that we would go out, take on the risk of borrowing the money to get it built. Again, build it the way you want it, and then, and handle the issue with your input. It's not like we're going to just build it how we think it. We want you to have input into a space that is the same size, 52,000 square feet, basically the same size of the proposals that we saw last December in the paper. So again, I just want to say we're thankful, the opportunity to come back to the table. We hadn't heard much for a while, and we weren't sure where this was all going. And, and believe me when I say that we are asked at least weekly by people in the city about how's this deal coming? And some don't think it's going to happen, and people ask us why not? Because we did it, and not that we're the geniuses in the world here, but when we did this, we kept asking people at presentations, what is, what do you see wrong with this idea? What's the hole in it? You know, what, what do we miss? And most, we couldn't get them to tell us what we missed here. So, and so we left this alone for a year thinking it must be the financing of it, that must be the issue. But there's probably something that we are missing. But we just appreciate the opportunity, and we would just ask the council to give it a serious look and a serious consideration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Deanna. I have one question. Deanna, with the, with the mall, with coals being over there now, and snow removal, with, you know, say if the city could go with this, how would that work out? Would everybody be hauling out the snow then, or is there going to be a place to push it?
So, yeah, it's a good question, Tom. So on your three to four acres that you would own, I believe there'd be room there to pile snow if there wouldn't. I think that we would help work with you and Rockstep to have a space, because obviously, there's space for them to hold snow on that property. To get it pushed, I think, to push it to the south, get it out in front of kind of where the moon is, wherever that area there. So you're not blocking the view of coals. Coals probably would get uptight about that. But I think there's space there to push the snowwork to the side there. That's a great question. Especially, especially this, especially this winter. Because we, I'll admit to you, Tom, that Wilmer Ten pays to have snow hauled away, only to have it melt a month or two later, which seems like just crazy to do that. We need space for our parking, for our tenants, and so we have to do that.
Because I don't want, you know, coals getting mad, you know, the city is, you know, has this mile high piles of snow.
Right. There is, the city, the city owns all of the property across Fifth Street as well.
That was going to be my question, I'm fearing, would we be able to push snow across Fifth Street up next to the, with the ditch?
Well, we, we totally frown on any moving snow cross roadways like that. That's kind of one of the things that we try to enforce with other places, especially with that being a drainage ditch there, we wouldn't put it in there. So if it's like any other parking lot the city would own, we'd make a pile up, stuff it away, you know, as time goes.
I have a question.
Yeah.
It says, Tuition Construction originally built this building in the late 1970s. And are they referring to JCPenney's or they're referring to the mall?
JCPenney's. So when the mall was built, like, kind of that main structure was put together, and then oftentimes what happens is Kmart was a separate building they attached. JCPenney was a separate building they attached, and Herbert's looks like a separate. So, the, so, if it's, I don't know how long it took for the mall to build, and then JCPenney was added on later, but that's, it's a standalone spot there.
So when did the mall actually get built?
1902 or 3?
1970. I think everything was set up. I think Herberters was set up three times, wasn't it, Kelly?
At least two.
Herberters was, yeah.
The addition for Herberters started, remember there was Golden Stack? Yep. That was where the pizza place is right now. That was called.
Yeah.
And that was all the way from there to Herberters, one addition. Then it went east after that, down to JCPenney.
I had questions as you were going, but I can't think of them.
The advantage. Yeah, Julie.
And I know we, we kind of discussed this two or two and a half years ago. What happens with, with the HVAC that would run the community center and city hall? And that is all connected then with the Uptown Mall, correct?
No. No. So, yeah, so they have on top of the JCPenney, Julie, they have their own rooftop units, and also there's their own power. So this building truly, other than the fact that you have a common wall, it's a standalone building.
What's the, I don't know if Kelly wants to answer this or you. Since that building was built, when you're killed?
Sometime in the 70s.
That's a 40 year old building plus?
50.
Yeah. Yeah. What kind of longevity can we expect from this building?
Well, the, the exterior wall panels are precast concrete. And the roof structure is barrejoist and metal deck. So that building will last as long as you want it to. You're going to have to, you have roof replacement, which you have to do, you have to keep it weather tight. But the building structure itself, there's not anything that's deteriorating.
So when I talked about moving the door, Mayor, was, was those precast can, panels? So the JCPenney door is a little bit, it doesn't line up with all of it in the mall, it's too far to the north. But, so when we were there two years ago, Troy Construction determined to switch out two panels with the door in the dead center, so they would get that atrium look. So on the outside, that's how we would change it to make sure the roof is good, and then the parking lot, of course. But the building itself, it's, and I'm not, he's the builder, not me.
I, I do have a concern along those lines. I mean, we just saw what happened up in Duluth.
Yeah.
The mall up there. Which I'm assuming would be about the same age as, as this building. Yeah, I mean, I know this is extraordinary winter with all the snow. There's a lot of weight on these buildings and 50 year old structures. It, it's a concern.
So I think that there was, Carl, there's a, there's a test of how much you can hold for snow load. This is the winter to test it. So, and I think that one of the things that, and I know there's probably some concern about the age of the building. But, but I don't want the city council to forget is the impact that can be made for the economy. You know, like I said, I can't guarantee that people are going to build there, but that's to create more traffic. And people want to put their businesses where there's traffic, and the goal is to get some of the traffic out of First Street anyway. And I think this probably accomplishes that. And then it just, like I mentioned, it's, no one's asking for any tax abatement or tax free anything. Just, you know, if you're going to spend the money to do this, this, this will have an economic impact, much more so than the other locations that you consider.
Other questions?
Yeah.
We have a guarantee that Rockstep will maintain their part of the building?
The, well, I, so I don't know why they wouldn't, because the only way they're going to get new tenants is to keep their part maintained. Are you, you mean like inside of the building?
Or both?
Yes, yes. Yeah, so one of the things that, and I'm not sure exactly how Rockstep will spend the money that we would pay them to buy it. But one of the things that they're working hard to do is trying to get a spot, someone to fill in next door harbor freight. And they're also, and I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but the Herberters, the site for Herberters, went to auction. It did, they, it ended up being a It did, they, it ended up being a no sale. I think the price got to just over a million dollars. But that is a separate parcel that also like to sell off, so they can just concentrate on the smaller part of it. Rockstep, I believe, owns seventeen different malls across America, including the one in Virginia, Minnesota, and the one in Aberdeen, South Dakota, and then the one in Nebraska, and several in the south. So there is some, there's some horsepower there. And we certainly hope that they continue to develop efforts to, to, to make that work. Because obviously, there's ten or eleven people here in the city of Wilmer that invested that, with them, in a much, much smaller, smaller percentage. But, plus, not only that, but I just think for the, for the city itself to have something that large and that big a scale, to go dark because steps weren't taken to get more people in there, do some things that could obviously help it out. I think that would be tough to swallow, that's a big space if there wasn't, you know, stores in there. But for those of you that think this, this is some kind of a deal for Rockstep, I don't see that at all. This is a deal, the taxpayers of Wilmer, Minnesota. If, if the city council was worried about bonding for four million dollars back two years ago when rates were at two percent, I don't know how you're gonna, I don't know how it's gonna go over to bond for something for twenty-eight million dollars when rates are at five or six. So, and that's not anyone's fault, that just happened, the economy just changed. But I know that there were several people that told me back two and a half years ago that they're worried about bonding even four million dollars for this project. And I would think your concern is probably the same today. Only the project, this project, our project, is more expensive, and the projects that I read about in December in the paper were much more expensive.
I, I contacted you and Kelly because I wanted to know more information about your proposal. Because I was not connected with the council when it came forward. So I don't want this to be misunderstood, that I'm against or anything. But Rockstep hasn't done themselves any favor with their parking lot. Everybody thinks that the city needs to take care of that parking lot. Well, it's not a parking lot, it's malls. And that, that concerns people.
Right.
Their attention to that parking lot.
So, every time, practically every time, Mayor, that I speak with Andy Weiner, I talk about that parking lot. Because if I had a hundred dollars for a time, someone complained to me about it, they don't even know that I have any interest in that deal, or Wilmer Ten does. They always get just people on the street about parking lot, and I think I could retire, because I get a hundred dollars every, twice a week, bro. So, the thing is that I think that there's some, there was some, maybe hard feelings with, with Rockstep amongst people in the city council, because a proposal was made probably in two thousand seventeen or eighteen. And I think that we have to get over that, and it's, this is not Rockstep coming to with an idea. This is eight local people that have paid real estate taxes and taxes and home businesses in this town for fifty or sixty years. It's an idea that we think is gonna be an idea that would save all the taxpayers. Back when I did this proposal, the first time I lived in the countryside in Penn, I'm back in town now. So, Mike and Carl, you are my city council members. So, I think that we need to look at it, that there's an opportunity here to do something that's impactful for the economy in the city. And it just, I think, honestly, I think it'd be a feather in the hat, the city council bill will say, hey, we took the step to repurpose a project. Maybe you gave the booster shot and needed. So, yeah, I agree on the parking lot.
Well, I, I think that concerns people as far as the attention given to that facility. Like I said, I contacted you because I wanted to know more, and I, I thought it was a good option for us to think about. So.
And, and Mayor and City Council, we're more than grateful to have the opportunity to discuss this with you again. I think that, I really appreciate the opportunity and the time that you spent.
Yes.
I have a question, Dion. So if the city does do this, so is there some kind of also association costs that go along with having this? Since we're connected and part of them, of the mall?
This is what, so, let's see, that's a great question. So, it's what I see would have to happen, you'd have to have a shared wall agreement with, with Rockstep on that wall that just connects you to them. And other than that, the rest of that property is yours. So, just, just like when you're in a, sometimes, and maybe Rick knows more about this than I do, but sometimes they're gonna condo type, this would not be a condo, this is your own separate thing, just like the buildings downtown. There's buildings downtown Wilmer that have a shared wall agreement. So like, if I finance those, I have to, as a bank, I have to know how that all works. So that would be the thing. And then from there, how it's the city property.
Yeah. So Doug, sometimes in these kind of deals, you could allocate, or you could negotiate part of the sale proceeds to go towards repairing a certain portion of the parking lot. If the city did this deal, they would certainly take care of their portion. But you could also maybe designate two, three, four, five, six hundred thousand dollars to repair the other part of that parking lot, particularly on the east side.
Yeah, I don't know what the cost of that parking lot would be, but it would be horrible.
It, it needs to, honestly, it needs to be agreed spaced out.
Yeah.
And I've told them that. They need to take several, I don't know, these square feet or acres, and just rip it up and put grass in. You don't have to maintain it, mow the grass for three months or whatever. But do a couple of things, it's not enough to look at it. And also, you try by more modern places now, there's lots of green space, lots of trees and stuff. That's what really should happen on that west side. For sure, well, like less than chicken, I'm looking forward to some chicken going in, because that's taking rid of part of that parking lot. So, and then, as Mark and Ken said, that's a good point, you can negotiate that stuff. I have to remind you that there is a mortgage on the malls, the bank that owns that mortgage, which is a local bank here in town, not a home state bank. They would have some money on what, you know, how much the proceeds would have to go towards debt service, pay down debt, or would go into, it'd be great if they could stick, you know, several hundred thousand dollars in repairing some of that parking lot. Dion, Kelly, how long would this project take?
Construction-wise, probably twelve months. There'd be a design phase that was, you know, obviously, so. Eighteen months minimum.
What's the range, the other side of that one? Eighteen?
Well, the design side, you know, the construction is a little bit more defined. The design side, we always tell clients that a lot of it is up to you. How fast do you want to go through that process? How much time can you invest in that process? How fast can you make decisions?
I didn't even think about that until I presented.
You're a funny guy.
Yes, lovely.
One of the questions that's been asked me, and if I think I'm still hearing you correctly, you're kind of presenting this as a closed project. So, it's, you are, you are gonna do the design, you're gonna do the bill, you're gonna do the financing with that. And I guess, from a city standpoint, I'm used to us needing to go out for bids, needing to go out to look at different opportunities. And actually, ten million dollars, the figure that was quoted the last time, was a figure we were talking about for a new City Hall versus a remodeled City Hall. And so I have reservations with kind of that closed process that this feels like. And also, if, I'm not sure if this gets you out of the mall business, or as you, as community leaders, would stay invested in Rockstep. I, you know, I have a concern just long-term with the viability of the mall. And so, do you have any comments that you'd like to make about the closed process? Or would it be open to bids for contractors? Or, you know, if I remember right, I know you talked about using subcontractors that would be local. But basically, you were looking at the designing, building, financing, and turning it over. And what I remember about the concern for the city is that if we agreed to buy it when it was done, we had to make the commitment upfront from a financing standpoint. So we would have to assume the responsibility the day that we agreed to the lease or the buyout, you know, with that. So that complicated the process of why not just bond now? Now, since that time, we've actually set aside some money for bond payments. We hadn't done that before. So we have the ability to do some bonding with that. And so, I still remain concerned. You made a comment, and I don't, you know, I remember we decided to have you check it out. But I thought we'd made a decision a couple of times about this not being in the city's best interest. So I was surprised to, to see you back here again tonight, understand it. You know, I worry about the mall. I just, you know, I'm not quite sure that I see this as the best location for the community center. I'm still, that's still where I am.
So, if I could maybe just respond to the, the fear or the worry about the mall. We, we hear that a lot in the community, and I have no investment in Rockstep Capital or the mall whatsoever. But if everyone solely has a fear about what's gonna happen to the mall, I guarantee you the mall is gonna fail.
I go there to certain stories. I, I always get it from a community standpoint, it's not what it was before. I miss Herberters, I miss JCPenneys, I miss those things. They're not coming back. And so what will be there from that standpoint? So, if Rockstep shut down, they decided this was one they were gonna walk away from, the community would find another use for it too. I believe that. You know, what, and I know in other locations, there are people tearing down malls. And I don't know, you know, long-term, what's the best opportunity for the city as it relates to that property? But I still think we have a responsibility, we have, if we're gonna build a City Hall, it has to be something that's going to be used for a long time in the future. It needs to be, you know, the right thing for the city to do. So, I appreciate your presentation and, and with that, but if you don't know that I've heard anything new.
So, can I answer a couple of those questions?
Sure.
So first of all, I think there's a misconception that somehow Wilmer Ten owns Rockstep or owns the mall. That cannot be further from the truth. And I tried, I wanted to kind of avoid that conversation tonight, because I don't think people either listen or follow this or pay attention. There's three of eight people in that list, in that partnership list, that have less than one point five percent ownership. Okay? So I have no control. Do I have, do I have the ability to talk to Rockstep management, pick them up on the phone, and, sure, call them? And largely because I want them to pay attention to what's happening in the city as it goes. They do this, again, they do this every city they go to, they find ten or twelve local people to pitch in a little bit. And those people who put in money into the deal don't have voting rights. We just are the eyes, kind of ears, like, you know, if, if the owners of Rockstep call us, say, hey, what's new in Wilmer? You know, here's what's happened. So, Wilmer Ten will probably stay in the strip mall business, and the Goodwill and, and the Garden, we own that building. So I see Wilmer Ten staying in that and stuff. We have, since we last spoke, we've sold two of our properties. Just because everybody in our group is getting a little bit older, and we just wanted to have less things to keep track of. As far as the closed process, the city would be totally involved with the design inside the four walls of JCPenney. That's totally, is gonna come from the city.
But, in, I mean, it's, it's not out for bids?
Well, we'd have a general contractor, and our general contractor would set up, would up for bids.
Okay.
So, and, and you all know that Kelly's my partner.
I understand that.
So, Tuition's would be the general contractor, and he'd have to go and find plumbers, electricians, drywall guys, all that stuff, just like you would. If the city was gonna go, you'd do the same thing, you could hire someone to be your general, and then they'd go out for a bid. So it would be local, a local contracting company and local subs that you see another project sometime working on this.
Tom, just a second. On that subject, is there a difference between what we're gonna hear from BKV and Wilmer Ten on Davis Bacon?
Can I answer that real quick there? So, if the state, or if the city doesn't get any state funds, you're not required to do Davis Bacon or prevailing wages. So, whether it's the mall option, or whether it's one of the other options you look at, so long as you're not receiving state funding for it, it shouldn't kind of require Davis Bacon or prevailing wage.
Okay, Tom. Just piggybacking up on Audrey's concerns about, I haven't put this off the bid, but two contractors, I want that really qualify that, hey, now we're picking between one or two. I wonder if we would do go with Wilmer Ten with that. Eliminated that, you kind of did put this off the bid, but that we got, you know, a number of, you know, offers here looking to pitch your idea to us?
No, I see us having designs and then putting it out for bids and seeing who comes back with the bids. And that's what you have a general contractor for, you know, it's just a different, this is, I think, a different presentation, a different process.
Any other questions for the council? I know I had some questions, but. Ron, go ahead.
Can I speak? I just have a few concerns, but to answer Tom's, I, I think, Wilmer Ten wishes to build it and then sell it to a slightly stated. That gives you the opportunity to hire one, which would be tuition construction.
Right.
What's the dollar amount of taxes that will be taken out of the tax rolls by the city owning that property? One question. I think if you answered the lease or purchase, it would be purchased completely. What if or when does the mall, does it bankrupt? And we're seeing it happen. Or what, what impact would that have on City Hall coming? You've done a great job in presenting this. It looks really, really nice.
Thank you.
And what do we do with the old community center? That's empty. And there's, there's no association agreement, but there is, is there a fee tied in to Rockstep? Or the shared wall agreement? Or, right, for, for the shared wall agreement, that would mean? We haven't, we haven't got that part of them. I don't think, I don't know why that would be. But I mean, that's something, that's a good question to be thought of. Other than just having to file at the courthouse that you're sharing a wall together, you're going to do it together. So there would be a shared agreement? There, I think there would have to.
There would have to, there would have to.
What does it cost the city annually?
My, my, my guess would be, and that the shared wall agreement would be that if there's any maintenance or repairs to that wall, that there would be a share of Austin.
I see, sure. And then, we know if there's any delinquent tenants presently in the mall. On that, I don't know. Don't put very into that. Well, it, it bears on the fact that someday that might not be a mall, it might be, I go back to the county or state tax purposes. I know that, or Rockstep purchased, I don't know how many malls, you've mentioned several, I know there's one with Scottson they also purchased. They were, I would say that they were family malls, they got them for a really good price, I figured they'd build them up and then turn around and sell them again. That's happening in a lot of businesses, even in fast food restaurants. Hundred twenty, Burger Kings just went bankrupt this month, January fifty of it. They're under combined ownership, investors. The cost of operating a mall without tenants is just, well, you know, because you, three of you guys have been on that.
Isn't that right?
That brings me to my last question. Is it, is it a conflict of interest? Three members that are attached to the mall with Rockstep, city kind of bailing a mall, a portion of it? Would you have a question, or? I'd like to answer that. That's why I've been here ever since two years ago, Ron. I always tell people that right away, because I don't want people to think that, you know, obviously, maybe one point five, one point six percent that we have no influence.
Right.
But I always want people to know that, because the minute this came out, someone wrote on social media that Wilmer Ten owns the mall, Wilmer Ten's trying to do this deal, and thankfully.
Far from that.
Yes, yeah. I, I look at it the opposite way. There's a solution here that can A, save taxpayers ten to fifteen million dollars, and B, There's a solution here that can A, save taxpayers 10 to 15 million dollars and B, give booster shot to the biggest, biggest retail center in the city. Why wouldn't the city want to do that? That's what I look at.
Well, that's, that's questions I had here, but I would like to tax them all. It's going to come off the tax.
Yeah, right now it's not available because county's in the process, because I was looking it up, county's in the process of changing that, all the taxes for this parcel, so it's all being split out, so I can't get to that.
Well.
Because I did look at your presentation a little.
Thank you.
I don't want to put you on the spot. I'm going to ask the question for later discussion. Sure, can you do it? 12 or 14 million?
You can't guess these days.
Yeah, it's very likely.
What we did, what we did, Mayor, was we just added 10 million, we added another 40% on to get to 14. And we'd have to get the numbers, you know, to drill it down. And obviously you would have to know that before, you know, this is pretty informal.
And along the same lines, moving into a 50-year-old building already, can you assure us that it's going to last another 50 years? I mean, you know, we're putting 14, 15, 16 million into this. We don't want to have to come back 20 years from now and say the building's failing. It's a 70-year-old building, I mean, we would need some assurances on that end as well. Audrey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask the cost question in a different way. Remember, last time you said you could save us, I think, 10% by doing it versus us building, bidding it? This time you said it differently, that you, I think you said you could save us millions of dollars by doing it. So I'm struggling with that concept of how can you do it for less?
Oh, I guess maybe you misunderstood me, Audrey. I'm just referring to the December article in The Tribune that listed costs here from 28 to 30 million dollars for doing a separate city hall and a separate community center.
Oh, you're using those figures that were just the presentation?
Yeah, that's right.
All right, okay.
Follow up on this one. Kelly, how hard would it be, you know, to remove a bad section of a wall with something they come up with? And like, you're going to do something to address that, make it flush? Say another one, you, how difficult would that be to pull out and replace?
It's modular basically, so it's pretty easy. I mean, yeah, it's disruptive, obviously. But, I mean, anything with, it's all going to, the engineering is all going to be looked at again. You're permitting everything, that'd be, everything has to be up to today's codes for all of the engineer and everything.
So would it be possible, say, 30 years from now, one person in the wall, say, what we call like, hands inside, they'll say, hey, Matt, can you make this prepared wall, here's the dimensions? You know, they could really go over something like that.
Yeah, I wouldn't foresee, I mean, as long as you're maintaining it, it doesn't have to happen.
You know, it's amazing to me that you can look back on your own life and 50 years ago, I worked for the city in the engineering department. Our office was up in the third floor of the auditorium. And we built, rebuilt the old clinic, which is city hall now, that's 50 years. So that 50 years goes by really fast. And I think we need to put that in perspective. Anything else, Dion or Kelly?
May I ask, Mayor, can I ask one quick question?
Sure.
I'm just curious, so in your image, you showed the kind of a pedestrian mall in the center that was shared by city hall and the mall area? Who maintains that area?
The city owns that area as well.
Well, that would be owned by the city.
That would be a part of the city property.
So on the picture that shows, it's right here, everything white is city property, all of this is city property. In that rendering, you show.
Rendered.
One back this way. Is that, that's access to, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Look, I was just curious.
Is this equity city hall and stores?
Yep, no, so this, if we flip it that way. Whoops. So this, you'd be walking in that H-trim?
Oh, and strictly city hall.
Strictly city hall, then you hit this, the shared wall. I thought it was a shared mall access. No. All right, there's nothing else, thank you.
Thank you.
If we walk through the state, watch the next part, if you can.
All right, BKV Group.
Well, actually, and hopefully everybody's got some energy, nobody's in the bathroom break or mouth do.
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
Five minutes. I, hopefully I'll talk a little loud as I start, just to make sure it's awake. Because it's a long night and we appreciate your time and involvement. My name is Bruce Schwartz, I'm a partner with BKV Group, we're an architectural engineer from both cities. I have Paul Shell with me as well, he's our partner, he handles our government work. We don't have a dog this night. You know, our, our, our plan and our goal is to provide you with information to make a good long-term decision for the city. Cities very rarely get an opportunity to define what their city hall is going to look like, what their community center is going to be. And so it's, it's, it has to be the best for the city and what works for you financially, what works for you, you know, in every aspect for the community and so on and so forth. But our goal as your consult on this is really just to give you the information that we pulled together. We were on a project previously that got put on hold and to tell you the truth, it was probably good that it got put on hold when it did because when it come out back right before the pandemic was to do a combined city hall community center. Size of the space hadn't really been vetted out well, it was just kind of generally out there with some general information. At that time, it was about 51,000 square feet. First thing we did with, with you and the city was sit down and meet with all the departments and make sure that whatever you do, you don't want to plan a space for today, you want to make sure you plan it for the long term. So when we do our space programming, we look at five-year increments, five, 15, 20-year increments. And what we do is look at staff and department and, you know, are you adding IT, you're adding building department, additional officials? What's going on in the city that might cause growth? Not that you want to overbuild, but you want to try to plan smartly for that. Same thing with Britta and the community center. You know, I'll give you all a lot of credit. It's not a senior center. I think at one point it might have been a senior center, but what Britta has done, which is phenomenal, is really make that an asset to your community. I mean, when you look at the wood shops and the art shops and the music and all the things that it provides for the community, it's, it's a great asset. And what she's done in the programming and working with her is to identify the individuals that use those and then what is going to expand, what kind of programs are going to grow to help, can help to see that asset in the community continue to grow. So after we finished all the programming, we ended up with about 60,000 square feet total. And just to give you an idea, so after the programming, the community center was right about 28,000 square feet and the city hall was right about 32,000 square feet. And that was, again, going through the departments and which had, and nothing seemed outrageous. It's what, we've been doing this for, our company over 44 years, I've been doing it for 40 years. We've done over 100 city halls, over 30-something community centers all around Minnesota. And, and really what we do is, is when we're working with everybody, we're keeping people check, right? If somebody says, oh, I need big palatial office with my own bathroom, we question those kinds of things. So everything that was done, was done with current standards and current appropriate sizing. So the first step was to say, okay, how big should these buildings be? Then once we identified that how big they should be, that for the long term of the city, the next step was, hey, where might they go in the community? And so the presentation tonight really is, deals with the potential locations of some of these facilities and how well they might or might not work. So the first plan you're seeing up there is really the sites that we looked at. And we work with Justice, we work with Leslie and we work with the city team to say, okay, what, what are the sites? Where would you like us to consider? And so A, A up on there, and, and we'll zoom into this individual properties, but right now this is overall map. And, and A, which is kind of in that center core area, is Gash Park. B, which is above, just north of that, is Lincoln Park. And then C, which is down in the right-hand corner, is Lakeland, the Lakeland Elementary School site. We looked at those sites specifically for community centers, those were the idea. They'd be in the community, they'd be accessible, we looked at kind of community locations. We also looked at where might you be, where might you have, I should say, a combined opportunity? So where could you do a city hall and community center together? Block 50 was one that came up, came to mind, it's right downtown, how would that work? And again, I think we heard some of the same things that Dion was talking about earlier, is the concern for Allen, Allen 71 and traffic and speed and accessibility. So that block 50 was an option, it's downtown, a little more in the core of the city. We did though, look at what we call the Robins Island site, or the, which is really, that was one of our designers saying Robins Island, but it's really the, you know, what the current community center site is one of the options we looked at as a combined site. We also looked at, okay, well, if you were going to do just a city hall by itself, where might that be? And we talked about block 50 as well as kind of incorporating the site where the hardware hang is and what that looks like. There's not to say there's not other opportunities and other sites out there, these were the ones that were brought to the table. On the right-hand side, it's really hard to see, I'm going to zoom in on my copy, just so I can read some of this. Some of the important things that we identified early on, and again, hopefully these resonate appropriately, is, is what are the guiding principles? What is, what helps us to determine what's important as far as where these facilities are? Well, for the community center, what was talked about was community accessibility, right? Bus routes in a neighborhood, things like this. Activity to open space in the out, outdoor area. So having those open ground and outdoor sites, space around it, you can get that outdoor and indoor, you can do activities outside. It created a community center, it's got a lot more capabilities to sponsor a lot more types of events. You know, farmer's market there, whatever, you can do all kinds of things. Close proximity to neighborhoods, it was felt that, I think it, within the neighborhood, kind of creates that hub, that neighborhood center and a certain synergy with the neighborhood as well as others coming to that area. It really starts to revibrate, kind of reinvigorate kind of that neighborhood that it might be in. Walkability for children, no major crossroads, again, making this community center, again, with the art, with music, all the things that it provides, it's not just for elderly individuals, it's for everybody in the community. So making it more short, more of a walkability type situation. And then we talked about architecture, you know, architecture is, it, it, some people, it means a lot to an architect. You know, it's funny, you know, you go to your neighborhood church, right? You, you go to your church that you belong to and, and you take pride in that church and you take pride in being there and you take what it represents in the community. A lot of times, your city halls and your city buildings have that same thing. They're giving you, they're giving you and the citizens of your community a sense of who you are and what's important. I mean, you look at all of the old historic courthouse, even the library downtown, they have certain qualities to them. So anyway, those were things we talked about. For the city hall side, what we talked about is adequate and appropriate space for operations. Right now, they're scattered all over the place, cramped in areas, the building just doesn't work as it is. Adequate parking for staff and fleet, some of the vehicles that you have for your staff and some of the city vehicles, making sure you've got adequate place to park that. Adequate parking for the council, the meetings, public hearings, things like that. You know, there's ebbs and flows of when you have large mouths, but making sure that there's parking accessible to the community when they do need to be there. And the building department, the folks that visit. Building appropriate representation, again, the quality and the character of Wilmer. Probably the city hall more so than the community center is a, is a representation of your community. It's a representation of who you are. And you want it to, you know, again, you just want it to be a quality of something you can all be respectable of and be proud of. Downtown location was talked about as being ideal, right? If, being downtown, there's certain businesses, you know, it's any urban area or any city area, when you have those businesses and things downtown, whether it's staff or people coming to city hall, they're generating business in that downtown area. So being downtown, accessible, it represents where it is, you know, it's, it's easy to find. And then, you know, incorporating design standards and things like that for the, for the city. You, you rarely get the opportunity to do this, so picking the right place, picking where it should go, picking how it should be is important. So those were the, those were the, the guiding principles we talked about. And if anybody has any questions or want, believe me, you don't have to wait until we're done, something is, if you want. Okay, so the first site is Gash Park, I hope. And Gash Park, so what we did is, you'll see, you know, that orange block is really just represents roughly that 32, 28, 28,000 square foot block. It's a single-story building. You know, we're not looking at a multi-story.
Could that happen?
Yes. From a cost constructibility standpoint and just access and whatnot, if you do it in a single story, it makes the most sense. We put that down and the goal was to lay it out. Whenever we did parking for these sites, we looked at what's currently at the existing community center and said, we're doing that plus. So it's at least 20 plus parking spaces plus what's currently at the community center. So you can see the block identifies it, it shows areas that could be outdoor play areas, play areas for kids, additional art areas, additional things to do with the community center, but it works real well on this site. What we did in this left-hand, oh, I forgot, I have my mouse controlling it, but in the left-hand box below it, what we did was took those community values and put either a green shack that showed kind of, or a red ax, and you'll see it in your packet, it's probably a little easier to see, or a red ax that didn't. This site works well, it, it can provide what's needed. There's only one negative to Gash Park. Bolton Mink is our civil engineer on the project and we reviewed the site with Bolton Mink. What we found out on Gash Park is there, there are major utility conflicts with the site with trunk and sanitary soil. It's running northeast, or I'm sorry, east-west and north-south. So while the site works, there's some major utilities on Gash Park that would have to be rerouted to make that building, to make that site work. So while it can work, it, it's got that issue. Next site that we dealt with was Lincoln Park. So Lincoln Park, same kind of thing as before, it got trot to the north, it has good public access, it's a facility, it provides adequate parking, you could kind of share that green open park space to the west with the multifamily residential facilities going on. And again, it becomes part of the community, it becomes part of the access. You could do outdoor gardens, it, what this showed us is the site as well as some of the other ones. So it's the same kind of concept and making sure we got adequate parking, making sure we got adequate space for the building. The other thing we didn't identify on this building, which is very easily to do it as well. While I talked about planning buildings for this 20-year growth or whatever, one of the things you can do with a new building that's really easy is you plan for that future expansion. You plan for areas on the side where you don't put utilities where you can extend 40 or 50 feet. So a new building does give you a lot more flexibility for future expansion as well. People do ask sometimes about vertical expansion. Vertical expansion has a lot of complexity to it. A lot of times you put mechanical stuff, plumbing, vents, things like this on the roof. Plus the roof trusses are only one-third the capacity of the floor system. So going vertically has a lot of additional cost challenges. This, this site to us, on a community accessibility, active outdoor space can be incorporated. It promotes the neighborhood, creates that synergy with the neighborhood, adequate parking, walkability to the neighborhood, good public access. And it just seems to be a site, the site development impacts were a major fault, we didn't see them, it would be anything major on this one. So that was the Lincoln Park one.
Look, sorry, on, on this site, there's the, that old park lot off of Minnesota Avenue. Would it, would it be possible on this site to, to have access into the, from both sides? So if we could use that, I mean, you have to cross the street then, but you have that, I don't know what the plan is.
That was, that was our discussion that, that when Bruce first presented it and that the overflow parking, the overflow parking would be at that site.
That definitely could be incorporated.
Certainly we want to keep this through the street, you know, because of still the development on that whole farm area still, that, that street, Minnesota would still go all the way out to Lakeland Drive.
Is that, that extend Minnesota all the way?
Yes, that would, that would be the way the planning would want to do it.
Which would then spur.
Okay, I was going to ask that question later on. Jared, would we run Minnesota through, would we run Ninth Street southeast or south between Minnesota?
Jared, would we run Minnesota, would we run 9th Street southeast or south between Minnesota and Tri?
That's a good question. I think Minnesota Avenue, definitely the extension to the east would happen. The 9th?
Yeah, I think 9th actually was taken out of the plot. I think 9th is actually vacated.
It might provide some connectivity, but probably want to take a bigger look at that before we say yes or no at that point, because there might be a future for the case, perhaps. Just depending on that whole area all comes together.
Can I just ask of that area, like, when we're looking at all of the sites that, that you've identified for us, I feel like everyone except this one, at least, is an area where I drive by a lot. And I don't know if it's just me, but I don't see a major, so I don't consider Trot to be something that the majority of the residents are on.
Sounds unlucky this time.
I know. Am I wrong about this?
There's a lot of people that use it. A lot of people. I think like, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah. That's if I tried to actually create.
Yeah, but like, not to the same level. This is a, this is a, like.
No, but they act like it's like. Yeah, I agree with the, I agree with the, they're doing 40, 45, 50, 100.
Well, no, but I'm saying just like, how often are, like, the traffic?
It's busy.
But it's not nearly as busy as the other streets that we're looking at. And I think, like, for me, that's always been the, the biggest drawback for this one.
I do want to, and if anybody hasn't, that doesn't own this, but I know there's been inquiries with the old school, that they do want to sell that.
Did the church?
Yeah, the church lot.
Yes.
Got a lot for.
They have, they have inquiries of selling, so. And it's out there.
Because that's new since the last time we talked about this, right?
Yes, since, yes, since.
Are they actively looking to sell it or did they just approach us?
Well, they didn't approach us, they approached, how it happened was Sarah, the community foundation, was approached by another community foundation that they had approached outside of the city.
Okay.
So the next site we looked at then was, was Lakeland or Lake, or Lakeland Elementary School. And again, you know, some of the things we looked at, it seemed to be had the adequate area that was needed, it was adjacent to the elementary school. It, our understanding is that eventually going to be some development in the area, some additional houses. Right now, it's on the edge. There was some question about access along the road and the speed of access. The bigger thing, again, with Jared's company, when we kind of went back, is some of the things that were identified was there's no access right now to stormwater or sanitary soil on the site, which could be a site development cost unless that's part of the city's long-term plan. There is a fairly steep grade across the site of about 10 feet, which would have to be accommodated from the elementary school down to the road to the south. So I mean, there's some elevation elevations that would have to be looked at. Stormwater pond is shown there. We felt that it's understanding that that wasn't adequate for the entire site, so that probably would have to be accommodated as well. So, so with this one, again, while it has the area needed, it has the outdoor space, it could have the parking, it, it would be more expensive from a site development standpoint like Gesh Park was. This one out of the three would probably be more expensive with the utilities on the park.
Thanks. Orientation that you have on here, I'm curious why it is towards Wilmer Avenue and not back further? Is that the elevation with putting it to the front and not putting it closer to the spot?
No, no, that's, that's a good, I, I think, well, of course, there's site development cost for the road.
Yeah.
But I, I think it could be located anywhere on that site. We, I think we put it up front just thinking front access, you know, visibility, things like that. It could be put anywhere. Oh, and the other thing that was mentioned is I think we did talk about retaining some of the back area for future development.
Right. Well, the other thing is that we're not, it's not clear that the school would let us have access to that property from their program.
Yeah, I was going to say, one of the things that they're concerned about is maintaining separation, not only in actuality, but also to prevent people turning their wrong parking lots.
Yes.
And they didn't also, they also didn't want a connection. They were opposed.
I thought at the last meeting we had on this, that we eliminated A, B, and C. I, I kind of want to get C done because of the concerns I had with traffic and, and from, like Kelly Welch and the other neighbors around C, that was a no. Osmis brought up about B, about being right there in residential, so we kind of agreed with her not to move there. And O'Brien brought up about wetlands on C, on A. I thought that's where we're at the last time, that we were just, we'll be talking about the combined one, not either on D or F.
We have to remember that Carl wasn't in those discussions and you know the doubt.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
So that's why we have to start from scratch.
Okay.
We're bringing up the speed on the sites.
Okay.
I agree.
Back to Gesh. There was a question that was asked and I don't think we ever got an answer.
That hasn't been answered yet.
Okay, all right. The question was, since the Gesh property was donated, does it have to remain a part or can it be built or something else? It might.
I seem to remember that.
Well, we asked the question, I thought they were going to get an answer that would help us if we.
And I think you brought that up, it came in that meeting, you brought, you and I brought that up.
It seemed to me when we had an early discussion about that, I think that was brought up, there was, we discussed a percentage of it that was still had to stay open land, but I think clearly that's to be further evaluated. Okay. Those were the three park sites that were identified. The next site, oops. The next site that we looked at, or C, Hall, was, was Block 50. And then we looked at, and again, could the building be pretty well anywhere on the site? I think it could be. We just, you know, part of when we look at an architect, when an architect looks at a massive building, again, this, we're at such a high level, we're not even to a final design. But when you're containing your building more in that east-west configuration, creating it more rectangular than square gives you the opportunity to take care of, take sun opportunities, solar opportunities, it's just better for light orientation. So our first inclination in a concept plan like this is to orientate them like that. We tried to create a little bit more of that, that city feel where the building more towards the street than sitting back, even though we did a landscape buffer. We do show the idea that you could have a plaza on the east side that kind of helps to engage the street and creates an entrance piece and some interest. We do show the parking for the city hall more on the north side. But again, this is really conceptual. Now, this does provide adequate parking and I, I don't remember the total numbers off the top. I had a proper good student and look. We had 49 stalls. Yeah, 49, 49 plus the overflow, so, you know, I don't know if it's 80 or 90 or probably 80 or so, somewhere in there. But we do have a good amount of parking that would easily accommodate staff as well as as a council meeting or some high, high event, as well as, you know, potentially some of that can be shared with the church, of course, as well. There's those opportunities. So that was the site there. When we looked at it as far as how it, how it equated to those kind of guiding, guiding principles, it, it was, had adequate space for city hall. And again, we looked at a single story because soon as you go to two stories, you've got elevators, you've got additional stairs. It does add cost. It's not, I don't want to say, you know, so everything's relative. If you add another $500,000 on a, on a project for elevators and stairs, that's a significant amount of money. So, you know, so doing a single story, if it works, makes sense. If, if you want to go vertical or allow priests to go vertical for future, that can happen as well. But it allows for parking for staff, it allows for parking for the public. It's in a location that could represent the community well and be visible and, and really be a city hall that would last for a long, long term as far as location and operational flows. It could incorporate the community design standards in a way that reflects the city and creates that facility that you're, that design, that building that you really want. And it, it, the only, the only thing with this is there were little site development impacts. Jared, can you help me on this? I don't remember what the site impact was on the. I don't remember either. I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Had been having dental clinic?
Oh, the purchase of the dental clinic.
Yeah, and we, we looked at different projects on Block 50 before and they weren't too anxious to sell their property.
So if the dental clinic, if the site was viable to the city and our, our support for you, because if I remember that dental clinic was kind of right in the middle of the site, we'd, we'd almost look at reorientating the building, going more north and west and kind of moving away from the clinic. So I think there's an opportunity to relook at it. You're to say that dental clinic needs to stay and we got to work around it. So, yeah, I think that was the one reason we put it in there. Sorry, Jared, I didn't mean to stick you in the chat. The next item we looked at then was what about the idea of a combined city hall community center? If it works, you have to then go to a two-story building. Building at that point does have to go vertical. It fits, I mean, you can see it goes basically from 4th to 5th and it does fit on that block. Parking then, but does become a little bit more of a premium. Our designers showed the idea of a parking ramp, but parking ramps are expensive. You know, so right now, I think we're showing basically 54 spaces that we could achieve on that north side as it goes around the Al. I, I think the parking structure is something you look at if you really needed to, but I don't, I don't think you look at a parking structure right off the bat because it's, it's expensive, I would say. But, you know, our, our planners, when they looked at this, again, the accessibility was there. The activity to open outsider space, so one of the things we looked at in the community areas was this outdoor space and the way that the, the community center could bleed out into open green fields and community gardens, and you could do all kinds of stuff outside. This doesn't really provide that opportunity unless we're doing something down in Winona where they ended up going with something on the roof. So, I mean, there are things you could do, but in this one, it didn't really provide it. From a community center standpoint, it doesn't really have neighborhood activity, proximity. It's downtown proximity, it's accessible, but it's not really in the neighborhood. It doesn't engage the neighborhood. It's got adequate parking, walkability is in the downtown core, but walkability is not from the neighborhoods. Now, you know, it is a little more disjunct from some of the neighborhood principles. And then the site development impact, I think, is going back to the dental clinic and that issue. From a city hall standpoint, it does meet all the other principles of downtown and does everything else that the others can. Well, that was just the second, the, the second sheet, it's just so in the second, the second level space. So I'm going to click past that because it really doesn't give us much additional information. The next one then was to look at what happens if we tear down the hardware hang? And what happens if we towered down the existing city hall to accommodate parking? And because of the constraints of the, of the businesses and the properties along, on 5th, the building has got to go vertical. There's just not enough footprint in that area to go horizontal. So city hall in that location has got to go vertical. The parking, you end up with about 40 spacers or so. We're showing a plaza that's on the one side, I don't know whether the plaza is there. Didn't seem to be really used well for anything. You couldn't use that corner piece much for parking. But adequate space for operations, yes, it can do that, but it's got to go more vertical. So it's going to add some cost. It's got adequate space for staff parking. It's limited for public parking, but really, if you have a major city council meeting or a major meeting or whatever, it's going to be limited. And people will have to park on the street and other areas, which is done, but we just have to remember it's not one small site. The design, I think, could be, could be created, you could create a design. I don't want to break my arm saying we're good, but we, we, we know how to create a nice building. So I think even if it was something sandwiched in there, we could create a beautiful building that you'd be proud of. Downtown location, it's accessible. Site development, again, is a, is a little bit challenging. Just the fact that you're building a building between those two buildings? I mean, we see them done in the cities all the time. They're tearing down stuff, little stuff, building bigger stuff. It does have some site constraints and some difficulties to it.
That's a good question.
Yes, ma'am.
Who owns that area that's marked plaza or that's a parking lot right now?
We do.
We own it? That's a city lot. So where parking is also where the courthouse, that's a city lot?
Where?
Where people park for the courthouse and the.
Well, the hardware, we call it the hardware hang lot there, you know?
No, the, well, right off, off from Becker. There's usually.
Like right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, this is a city lot here. There's one portion of that just by the dental office. I think they have a few stalls there. But generally speaking, that's a whole city lot around the dental office and everything.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So there, it's, I'm going to ask a quick question. So we do show the dental clinic right there in the middle block, just behind, just east of city hall. Is there another one over Block 50?
Yeah, so, good deed to lower.
That's good thing. So the next one we looked at then was the idea of, okay, well, what happens if, like, I'm not, I'm not necessarily a big proponent of this. But this is the idea that if you tear down the existing city hall and you just build new where you're at, right? You build more efficient space for that. You really don't gain any parking. The cost of, of moving city offices out to somewhere temporary location while you build's got complexity to it. I, I don't, I don't think this option really solves anything other than being a new building. I mean, it, give it a new building, but it's, it's the same location and limited parking. And then, and again, I think the cost and the operational impact to move city offices out of there for the one-plus-year duration of tearing that down and rebuilding and the cost to tear down, I, I just don't think, I think Block 50 is a much better viable option than this one. The next option we looked at then was, okay, what happens if, and we know that the rec center and some of these others now facilitate some of the, some of the operations that are currently in the, in the auditorium. Other than your office up on the third floor, which had been up in that space. I mean, the auditorium's a gorgeous old building, right? I'm never, I'm never going to, as an architect, I'm never going to say anything bad about the building because it's part of our history to some of these old buildings. The reality though is sometimes the question is, cost to upkeep that building. Some of the deferred maintenance, whether it's windows, roofs, whatever, you still have to take. Work with Thiefer, Thiefer Verfals some years ago. Keeping their, their auditorium up, up to date and taking care of it and paying utilities was quite a challenge at the time. So this option looked at, the idea of demolishing the auditorium. I think we talked to Leslie and Justice, still preserving owners of that building? And maybe moving them somewhere else? I mean, there's those exterior freezes, there's the, I always forget the name of that one room.
Memorial Room.
Memorial, Memorial. It, it's a gorgeous room. I, I think you want to preserve some of those things. So without a doubt, it's not just blow it away. I think there needs to be some preservation. But doing that, where you, if you were to take hardware hang down, the auditorium, you know, now it gives you a block that really could be developed for a city hall. Gives you where the hardware hang is. It, it creates an additional future space for some commercial development right along 5th there. So that's an opportunity and it gives you some areas for some outdoor space if that was important. So, but clearly, the cost to demolish the auditorium, the cost to demolish the hall, the cost to demolish hardware hacks has some site implications, has some cost implications. The other site we looked at, then we went back out to current community center site. And we looked at that, again, just to rehash it, knowing that there's some imperfections to the site, but let's look at it and just discuss it. So, you know, really what we're showing here is the idea that clearly there's adequate enough space on that site for a city hall and community center. That, that would work no matter what. We're not looking at preserving the, the existing community center. We're really looking at taking that down and building an entirely new building. You know, we, from a, from a, how it checks off the, the boxes, community access, I think in general, from what we understand is good. It's, it's, you've got to get there by, by a car, but, but it's, it's accessible. It's, it's, you got to get there by, by a car, but, but it's, it's accessible. It does have active outdoor open space. It's not in a neighborhood, of course. It's more removed away, a little more industrial area. Does have adequate parking. It's not a walkable location. Design can represent the community. It's on a major highway. You can create a, a building that represents you well. It doesn't have major site impacts, nothing that we know of on the site concerns. From a City Hall standpoint, some of the two negatives, I think, were really that it's a downtown location. It's not the downtown location is the primary difference with this one. So that was on that site.
Good question.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just curious from City South, there's more and more things being done online. How many people walk in City Hall to, not investors and not people who intentionally have need to see the average citizen? How many citizens walk in City Hall on a daily basis?
I'd say anywhere between a dozen and two dozen. And I think that's kind of ranging from people coming to pay things, whether that be just parking tickets or things like that. I don't know, just from my department, not even just to sit down with me and talk about potential projects, whether that be just a site addition or they're trying to figure out how they build something added on, kind of figure out the permitting process. But anywhere from dozen to two dozen on a average day.
So you think it would be a problem for them to come to City Hall all year? Driving to City Hall?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Driving to City Hall?
Yeah, so I guess, I guess probably like just from like a reflexive memory standpoint, some people probably get a little turned around. But Google exists, I think people found it, so.
Thank you.
Bruce, we have adequate space out there. Why don't we go to two stories? It says two stories.
Good question there. You know, I think we did, you know, you could, you could, we, because we're showing a lot of green space to the east. We're showing a lot of parking to the south. I think you could easily make that a one-story. I, I don't know, I don't know, and I, I'll be honest with you on it. I don't know if initially when my planners were looking that it became such a long linear building that they thought it might be better vertical. But the reality is it's certainly two separate buildings anyway. There is some shared opportunity. I will tell you that, that's the other thing is, when we looked at the program, we talked about that sixty thousand square feet. By putting the two together, there's some shared spaces. You have lobby space, you have public restroom, you have some meeting rooms that can be used for the community center as well as City Hall. I think we came up with, off the top of my head, I think it was four to five thousand square feet of space that we thought could be saved in doing it as a combined facility. So, so that was one of the benefits of a combined facility is there is some square footage that can be saved. We have seen some City Halls and community centers kind of join at the hip, which is kind of interesting. Shoreview, just in north of St. Paul area, has a City Hall Community Center. It's kind of interesting because, you know, you're, you're talking about the people that visit City Hall and there's not a lot. But you have all this energy from everything else that's going on, which kind of creates energy to the people in there as well. So, you know, there are some shared space that can be achieved though. But yeah, Mayor, I think, I, given the spaces on that site, I think we could easily make that single story if that was, if that made sense. Right now, we're showing very high-level conceptual. If the city were to say, you know, we really want to investigate one or two sites better, we want to understand better, we'd go to a more refined floor plan and layout, really where the spaces are, and then work with you to say, here's what this might be a little bit more.
Last time you presented this to us, I asked a question about like how much money we could expect to save by combining the two buildings. And I remember like it wasn't a whole lot.
Right now, we're estimating it's about one and a half to two million dollars.
Sure. Which is a whole lot. Which is a whole lot, but like in the grand scheme of like the numbers you were talking about, like, it wasn't. I'll take 1.2 million dollars from anyone on the table right now if they want to give it to me.
Well, you know, I'll, I'll get to that. I'll talk a little bit more about the, the good costs when we get to that piece too. But, you know, so we did some images. This slide just shows you some of the images that we put together. We had our design team just go through and, you know, this isn't a box. This isn't a bag. Every building, every facility we do, no matter whether it's in Detroit Lakes, Albert Lee, I'm going to the Library of Clara City right now. No matter where we work, you know, ultimately, at the end of the day, it's our client's building, right? So it needs to represent what you want it to be. And what we do, when we go through the building design piece, we come in with a lot of different images. And then we build in these models, different images to show you what it can be. So you do have that capability in your building to, to design what you want it to look like and how you want it to be. In today's technologies, you can do a lot of great stuff with that. Schedule-wise, I think very much. Yes, ma'am?
Yes. I, I think if we were going to go with the city council chambers being out at that location, I think that's why we had to go to two levels.
Well, so like in our Shakopee facility, it was, well, I take it back. We did go two stories because we did put admin and whatnot. But we have done some city facilities where, you're right, council chambers can sometimes be a little taller just because of the size of the space, but it doesn't necessarily have to make it two-story.
We, we also looked at some locations where like the community center room, that there was a room that converted into a council chambers versus having a whole council chambers.
Yep.
And, you know, our utilities is looking at doing something. And I, I really wonder whether this community needs three chambers.
You know, that, that's an excellent idea. And actually it would save more than some of the dollars I was talking about. When we did the City of Independence, which is over Wright County, what we did for them is, is the same exact thought. They're like, we have a, we have a city council meeting, what, twice a month or whatever? We have planning commission meetings, you know, twice a month, three times a month, whatever they were. We don't use that room that often. And this was the first one that we did, but I really like it, is it reminds me of the Wizard of Oz kind of thing. The dais sits behind these panels and closed. So the technology that you have at your dais, the microphones, any of your personal things, basically are behind these sliding panels that were in a niche in the room. And then the rest of the room is just a community room that they can use whenever. So that's a very good idea that, to tell you the truth, creates a lot of flexibility. Because you're right, the design of council space for strictly a design for a council space, in many cases, doesn't get used a lot.
Good question.
Yes, sir.
I think the last time we talked about council space, we also talked about security issues and exits. So I'd like to bring that back up.
So what, what we do nowadays, and, you know, it's the evil world sometimes that we've got to deal with. You'd hope that we wouldn't have to deal with it, but we do have to deal with it. When we do spaces nowadays, what we do is there's a few things we do in planning and design. So when it comes to city offices, we did this down in Rochester. People that come to visit, you might have meeting rooms off the lobby. So if you're meeting with a developer, you know, that might get irate because you're not letting them subdivide his property or you're paying too much property tax, whatever it's going to be, you keep them in a meeting room just off the lobby. So you come out there, you never bring public back and staff spaces. That's kind of one of the first things. When it comes to the council chambers, you know, you're not going to screen people coming in a building. You're not going to screen them for weapons when they come in the building. That's a courthouse deal and you're not going to do something like that. But you do want to provide and design the systems at the dais, which we would always do, which is ballistic material in the front of the dais, duress alarms in the butt, in the butt. So if somebody does, where was it, up in Little Falls? It was some years ago, up in that area of the state, somebody came into a council meeting and threatened council members. If you have that ballistic material, that, that typically is for, it's a calendar, half calendar, it's three fifty-sevens at least.
There's seven or eight different levels.
Yes, yeah, so you can do the, and it's, it's the Kevlar material. And what you, what you do is, is you have two things. You have the ability to drop if somebody has a threatening and hit that duress alarm, and it automatically alerts law enforcement, there's an issue, and gives you some time. The other thing we do when we design door facilities, we have doors behind the council, at least one door. It's really a controlled access that you can hit a button that opens and that releases the lock, allows council member to get out and others can't follow behind. So there's things like that that we, we would look at building into the facility. And you do that, you put the cameras in there, but the cameras are documenting. You know, we have as, we have, and I don't know about you guys, but if you know you have a contentious council meeting, if you know you have somebody that's going to be really problematic, we have seen in some council meetings, well, they'll have the sheriff or the local law enforcement sit in the council meeting for those kind of things. But anyway, we can outplan those kinds of things. From a schedule standpoint, I'm sorry, Commissioner, did you have, Councilman, did you have something you were questioning at one point? I'm sorry.
Julie's speaking to you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Julie, I thought you were speaking up earlier.
Nope, I asked my question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So from a schedule standpoint, you know, it depends where you want to go with it and where you want to, you know, where you want the product. The sooner, it's like everything in today's world, construction costs more tomorrow than it does today. When Deon was talking earlier, between twenty and 2021, there was a 20% spike in construction cost. During that pandemic piece, when you couldn't get materials, when labor was difficult, we've got contractors, construction managers we deal with, that have data that shows things just went off the chart. Unfortunately, things really haven't come down a lot. Materials become more available, but I hate to say it, until there's a real stop in things going on, contractors have no, no impetus to suddenly reduce their cost and they're not going to suddenly reduce material costs. So we're in a higher market for some of the cost and things like that.
The workforce is left as well. There's, there's still labor issues.
That's true. It has minimized. So from a schedule standpoint, what we first said is, again, we know that the state has $17 billion worth of funds. We've seen the state provide more and more funding. Community centers is one of those assets, whether it's Spicer, New London, the communities that even this community center provides support for, we have seen the state provide funding. Recently, we're doing a fire station for the City of Adina. They went for like, I want to say the project was about 12 million or something like that. They asked for like half of it. I think they got like three million. So the state's never giving you all of it, but the state potentially could give you some. Right now, we are in that band. Who were we talking to the other day? There was another community we're talking to the other day that's actually going to the state now. They're going to their representative. Oh, well, one was Pine County and then another one was Winona, exactly. And they're basically getting in the queue because now's when they're making the decisions. By the time they come out of session in May or whatever, hopefully the governor's got a bill unlike last time that he's going to actually release some of those funds. There's a possibility you could get some additional state funding. And, and we could point you in the right direction. When we did, when we did Detroit Lakes Police Station, they actually used sales tax, which I think is what you similarly used on that, on the, on the community center. And that's a different process altogether, but getting some state fund is an opportunity. So when we put the, the schedule together, what we identified is, you know, you might spend from now to May to see if you get some state fund. At least go after it, see if it's possible. But it's basically, in essence, when you look at a schedule from a project standpoint, and we broke this down, schematic design is the first phase of architectural design. I'll be real brief because it can be boring and I don't want to bore you too much. Schematic design is when you come up with a floor plan, the site plan of a building, that's that first step, if you confirm budget. And then after that, you go to the design development. And that's when you put all the, dot the i's, cross the t's, come in with a lot of detail. What kind of carpet are we using, what kind of wall, what kind of paints? It's a lot of detail, mechanical, electrical system. Construction documents, finalizing it, bidding it, and then awarding construction. Those are the typical phases of a project. It's about 10 months plus or minus for the design period. It's about two months for the bidding phase. You asked about bidding earlier on the other project. Clearly, this project would be the kind of project that you would get bidding exposure. You advertise the project like you've done other projects and get bidding out, out from contractors in the area and get competitive bidding for the project. Then once you award the contract, I put, you know, the, the duration is really up in the air, whether it would be 14 months or 18 months. And the reason that, that deviation in the construction schedule is until you pick one of the sites that you want, like say you say, you know what, tear down Hardware Hank and the auditorium makes the most sense, we're going to have to add four months to the front of that schedule. We know tearing down, doing that, some of that demolition site perhaps would take time. So we used a longer construction period, not knowing what option you were going with. So the reality is it could go 14 to 18 months would be what I would estimate for.
Yeah, if you had a City Hall and a, a community center, separate, two separate projects, those two smaller projects would advance faster than one large project.
That's true. And you could bid those two together to get benefit, volume benefit. So right now, we're showing that, you know, based on the schedule we put, you'd be moving into the new facility in the latter part of 2025. That's kind of where the timeframe lays out. From a budget standpoint, you know, what we, what we do when we put costs on a, on a study like this, you're doing it based on cost per square foot. You don't have the detail of the project. You don't know how many doors you have. You don't know the types of windows. You don't know, are you using carpet or just concrete floor? You don't know all the details of a project. So we use the stored cost per square foot. I reviewed our cost per square foot with construction managers and general contractors to make sure we're in the ballpark. And these are based on what these projects currently run. So for the, the City Hall, it's, it's, I remember my square footage, 31,000 square feet, almost 32,000 square feet. It's going to range, construction costs, current construction costs is about 11.4, 11.5 to 12.7, based on that. Now, the reason we're doing the range is because costs have fluctuated so much during this whole pandemic and coming out of it, that if, if you talk to a construction manager, basically they give you a cost right in the middle and say, that's pretty much where it's going to be. We'd like to think that it's high or low, it's going to be somewhere in there. Once the city sets a budget, no matter what it is, the company's got to live to that budget. In addition to the building itself, that 11.5 to 12.7 is site development cost. And that's where, that ranges from that 1.6 for the City Hall to three is all about whether you're doing demolition or whether you're doing minor site development. That can range anywhere in that general range. Design and construction contingency is a typical for a project. Until you have the specifics, you want to allow some level of contingency. You hope not to lose much of the construction contingency. That's, that's the city's money to be held and hopefully used only if needed during construction. We did inflate this construction out to 2025. So the reality is, if a project, I talked about the savings of the combined, but there's also savings if projects move forward, like the schedule we showed. If the schedule we showed moved the product, the construction forward, I have about 7% in there for inflation in that that could save some additional money as well. So we're showing the, the inflation for construction at the time that the project would be constructed, which brings the total to about 16.4, about 19.7 for New City Hall. On top of construction is what's considered soft. So soft cost or, they used to say if you took a building and shook it upside down and everything fell out, was soft cost. So the furniture for the building, the soil borings that need to be done, the commissioning to make sure a mechanical system operates the way it's supposed to, the attorney's fees, bonding fees, architectural engineering fees. There's a whole list of things that go into soft cost. What we do with soft cost is we estimate a number, then we work with the city because, again, that's your funds. Whether it's A B systems, even refrigerators and appliances. When we look at, when we look at these facilities, there's no reason to buy appliance through the contractor. They're just going to put a markup. So let the city purchase the refrigerator and the microwave or whatever, because then you save the markups on that. So anyway, long and short, City Hall roughly in this 19 to 23 million range with all the costs. That's not just construction, that's total project costs. Community Center, I won't go through the same breakdowns, but again, it's the same breakdown based on square footage and all the various items. So, you know, the construction based in 2025, roughly a 14.3 to 17.1, somewhere in there for the community center aspect, total project amount, almost 17 million, 20 million, somewhere in that range. If you combine the two, this is where we reduce some square footage and can create some efficiency. And it, it could be about 31 to about 35 million for the total project. So again, these are based on the program areas, based on the high-level analysis of the site, development costs, demolition costs for these buildings that we looked at. We put all it together to give us a range to make sure we understand. Again, if the city council were to say, you know what, we want to drill into these two, what we would do would is go back and do detailed cost estimates for these specific ones so we could drill into the costs a little bit more. And with that, one of the pieces that we believe strongly is, you know, I, I, the rest of you are probably in a boat like me. When somebody talks about a project that's 8, 10 million, 20 million, that's a lot of money. And just like you and the community and the members, people say, well, that's a lot of money. How in the heck are we going to do that? Doug here with, with Baker Tilly is a financial consultant. And so when we do projects around the state, whether it's county or city projects, we work with companies like Doug and look at it. we work with companies like Doug that look at the financial stability and the finances of the community and look at, okay, what would the tax impact be for the community? So I think with that, Leslie, if it's all right with you and the mayor, I think maybe Doug should talk about, what are the financial options of these options?
All right, thank Bruce. Is that the table that I provided, is that if it's not, that's okay? I can just walk through it? Is, okay, so when we look at, I do have it here.
Oh, yeah, I'll look to Jonah. We'll put it up on the screen.
Do you want to stick it on the flashcard?
Oh, okay, okay. That sounds good.
I can ask a question to buy you some time. The 1.2 million, let's see, 1.2 million is different now if I'm adding numbers up together. It's more like 525.
Well, I'm seeing city, I took the midpoint, city hall 21, community center 18. So combined, you're right, that's 39 and then combined 33, so that is 6.
I agree. Tom, now that's a lot of money. 1.2 versus 5.
Actually, it's a lot. It's a lot. From a combined standpoint, it's a lot more than what I was saying.
So we can tell you, what I'll show here is just.
That's what I was thinking about, that had to do with the inflation factor. I'm sorry. I forgot about, I misspoke earlier. That's what that was.
Thank you. This is really back to the envelope, but it puts us in the ballpark of, you know, what the cost is to property owners here. Combined, this is just, this project got your outstanding debt. It's got your community investment fund that's going to earn, luckily, it's earning more than it has in the past 15 years. And you have your new projects, which you've decided to do more streets than you have in the past. So this is just looking this in isolation. Obviously, you have other needs as well. And we can provide that a fuller picture. But just looking at this, city hall, 21 million. Because of the last two years, as Audrey mentioned, you have, you put this in the levy beginning in for collection budget year 22, I believe, correct? So for a combined million dollars, so the size of that debt would presumably go towards construction, reduce the amount that you need to borrow. I don't know how much discussion there's been about land proceeds at the industrial park, but that could also be a source of funds. And these are just, you know, we could also look at other potential sources of funds. I don't want to speak for Steve or Tyler. I mean, sewer funds doing okay. You know, there's other, there's other funds that we could look at to bring that down. But just being a high level conservative here, city hall, 19 million. We'll just stay with the city hall. For general obligation bonds under state statutes, we can go out 30 years. We typically don't historically, but on the streets, we've done 10, which because, you know, we're doing more, we're advertising over 15 years, but we can go out to 30 years. These are obviously 30-year buildings. The interest rate today would be 3.9%. It is incredibly volatile. Unfortunately, in my perverse world, the harder, the bigger the recession that we go into, and we are going to go into recession, you know, those interest rates are going to fall, right? So I don't, I'm not, yeah, so I think 4% is just a good estimate right now. And if I showed you the difference in four and five, you know, the impact to a $200,000 house is, you know, about 10 bucks a year. So again, not, nothing is going to derail a project. It certainly, I say, you know, whether you can borrow at 3, 4, 5% helps or hurts. It doesn't, you know, derail a project. So for the city hall, 19 million, 30 years, 4%, about a million a year in debt service. You already have it, looking at it from that perspective, you already have that 185, almost 500,000 in the current levy. So what are you adding on top of that? Another 614,000. If we take our current levy of 9%, that's about a 6% increase. Take our current tax capacity. Yeah, we're looking at, on a house of $200,000, we're going to get $63. You know, $63 each year. I mean, not add it on top, just add $63 to the basis and stay there. So that's the impact. Just moving over, go a little bit quicker. Over to the community center, 18 million dollars. I think that would be available, the 2 million in sales tax. So the annual payment, pretty close to 125,000. And there's not, you know, that would be the new annual debt service on a community center. And so we're looking at $96 on a $200,000 house. Then combined, take all those, sales tax, the reserves for city hall, the land proceeds, get it down to 29 million. We account for what's already in the budget. You're down to about 1.2 million in new annual debt service. And that results in combined impact of $123 on a $200,000 house. So that just puts in, looks at this in isolation. Obviously, you have other things you have to consider, but we wanted to put it, to give you a scope of what it would cost the average homeowner.
You give us a percentage of an increase for city hall, 6 to 7%. Can you do that for the other two?
It's right there, that levy impact. So 10% for the community center and then combined 13%.
Really, you talked about maybe we should be asking for some state money.
Oh, right. So this, you know, if you go to the next page, I just threw in, you know, and then I was looking at the capital investment bill. You know, I used to work at the state legislature for the other governor's budget and typically, it would be a 50% match. So with a lot of these projects, you might think, you would assume 50, but I just reduced it by 5 million.
Community center versus city hall or?
Well, and that's why I just did it for a community center. I didn't assume anything for a city hall.
I'm just curious with the other projects, any you were talking about there.
We, it's interesting. I've seen the state start to fund things that I've never seen in my 40-year career. They actually have, provide some funds for some jail projects around the state, which I thought would never happen because as soon as you give to one kid, you got to give to all 87 other county kids. So, and so, you know, I never thought that would happen. I haven't seen city halls, though, be one. They, I'm sorry.
I did, well, I interrupted you. I'm sorry. I mean, I'll just give you a sense of what's in the.
Capital bond.
In the bond, bond and bill right now, they passed the house and it's the side by side. So, and there's Aurora Community Center, 630,000. Apple Valley, it's in Inclusive Playground. Wabik, improvements. Cannon Falls, John Birch Park, Champlin, Missing Crossings, Chisholm, I Serena and Curling. Well, the deck, it's a little bit different. The Duluth, Duluth Spirit Mountain, Harman Town, I Serena, they like their hockey up there. You know, so it's, it's there. I mean, Richfield Nature Center, St. Paul, North End Community Center. Two community centers in St. Paul. So, yeah, I mean, that's in the list. The list really goes on. So it's certainly not out of the realm of possibility.
Yeah, so community center is definitely, the city hall, not so much. The other ones that we are seeing support are public safety. There is a spurred interest in fire stations, especially smaller communities, police stations. They are supporting more of those as well. Yes, sir.
How would it be if, just say, we ran on Robins Island Park and we just got going on the community center? And like two, three years, then we would add on to it for the city hall part? How much difference of a change would that be and how much work would it be really to add that on to it?
So what you do is you design the entire facility, right? You lay everything out so you know exactly where the cannibals are, where your phone connections are going to be. And you design it and you show that footprint, even on a plan, identifying, don't build here. We're doing something here in the future. That's the score. The cost impact, though, is whatever that additional city hall, community center, whatever you build in the future, is, it used to be, you used to be able to say 4.5% per year and be pretty comfortable, you know? But it's, we're using 6 and 7% now. Until, until things get controlled, we're still seeing this inflation. So if you had, you know, if you had, if you had a, let's see, the, the cost of that one. Which one were you saying would be delayed?
City hall. Because we have the last funds for the community center.
So let's assume that city hall with all project cost and maybe it's just construction cost. Let's assume it was somewhere in that middle, so say, just for the sake of discussion, 18 million. So if that was 18 million in 2025, and say you were doing it two years later, basically adding 14% to that 18 million.
But it compounds too.
Yeah, but I'm not worried about the.
And you did.
Oh, another 2.5 million dollars.
So that, you can do it. It's just increasing. Now, you said that if the economy does, you know, hit this recession, two years, three years down the road, there might be some efficiency. We just don't know that yet, you know? But we are seeing, we had a project we're doing for Rosemont right now, Public Works and Police Station. And they built Kraus Anderson, who was a construction manager. They built their bidding in portions. And the first portion, which was precast and steel, came in 2.5 million dollars under budget. So we are seeing some signs of some light, to tell you the truth.
One of his last programs, projects have to be completed by.
Well, we're collecting on the lost tax for 13 years, I believe.
Yeah, maybe nine years.
And besides that, that, we're collecting on that because we bond it for our projects. So we have to pay for those bonds, which right now is very favorable that our bond, our taxes are coming in to pay for our bonds. And, you know, you can't, you can't go out for another local option, local option sales tax until you have one tally up.
No, I was just wondering when this would have started, just with the community center.
What you could possibly do is you could ask the legislators for an amendment to that local option sales tax to go out longer, or you could ask them also to amend the local option sales tax so any money that we've been receiving, that looks like is over and above, that we could use it for the construction of the community center.
Bruce, you and I talked a little bit beforehand. Maybe you want to say something about the fact that we're we're the largest municipality in our area. We have people coming in and maybe some of the recognition of our legislators in regards to community center.
Yeah, you know, you have people like, you know, London, New Spicer, you know, Wesley, this helped some in the area. I mean, you have other people that are coming to this community where the amendments have. That's when the state definitely looks at it and says, you know what? Because they're looking at it and saying it's a broader benefit. It's not just to the sole individual group or the sole city. It's providing more of a regional impact. That's when they, you're right, absolutely. I think, and Wilmer's a good sized city. I mean, you have a lot of people for the services and things that are provided in this, in this area. There's a lot of people that come to this area.
I have a question. And obviously, we're railroad help here, correct? Does a railroad ever get involved with the city helping set?
I don't know. Railroad's acting God. I mean, you know, it's funny, we're doing some work out in Sturms County and they were talking about trying to get some property from the railroad. It was literally going to take like an act of God to try to figure out how to make that happen.
You got any, so the term.
Yeah, I know.
Get them to do cleanup.
Your honor, go ahead. Well, I'm an idea guy. I think out of the box a lot of times. I'm in construction. The local option sales tax, there's two way in for the community center. And I notice he's categorized this as the Robins Island Regional Park. So you got it under. So why couldn't you use some of the local, local option sales tax, even more of it for that? And when we did the local option sales tax for the library back, I don't know, 25 years ago, we ran over, I mean, a lot of money. And we asked the state what we could do with it. They said, you put in the general fund and do what you want with it. So don't dismiss that idea. Then there's the idea of, we've gone in and rebuilt over foundations that houses burned down, okay? There's a foundation over there. You could reuse that for a two-story. It's carried this one all these years. Save that foundation and then add the city hall on to it and make the community center two stories, as would the city hall be. So you can save some money there also. But I think this local option sales tax, you could have flagged to a Robins Island Regional Park and use the excess you collect. I mean, it's not against the law to collect excess.
Bill that the legislators passed for this local option sales tax specifically says that only 10% of everything that is designated for these particular projects can be transferred to a new project. They really, they literally tied the hands of Wilmer in this last.
Then I would opt for.
That's, they did. They really tied the city of Wilmer's hands on this last law that they passed for the city of Wilmer.
Then the city should opt for extending the sales tax, maybe even indefinitely.
And we can only, you know, it can only, the sales tax cannot be used to build the city hall. It can only, if anything, have been used to build the community center.
Except in Rochester, Duluth, they have an ongoing sales tax and they think they can use it for almost anything. I don't know why we wouldn't push for something like that. Certainly could use it for roads.
It kept them long term. Now the legislators are not so keen on local option sales tax.
But the foundation idea, I think it certainly would work in this to save a lot of money. It's foundational, not cheap these ways. It's awful expensive. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thanks.
No, I brought mine out. I was just asking what it would, what it would cost or if we could just start with the community center and add, you know, the city hall, that one two, three years down the line. He answered that. At some point in time, I have to ask where, as an individual council member, I'm at the Robins Island site right now for the dual, you know, we would move forward. That was up until one more tank come in, you know, I think we had all done, we have some new people on. So I think we're all in scrap for, you know, has to be talked about yet.
You mentioned earlier in the evening, Mr. Butterfield, about the traffic flow on North 71.
No, I talked about it on Lakeland Drive, okay, by Lakeland School.
So 60 mile an hour traffic on North 71, is, have you ever considered a stoplight at the entrance to Robins Island? Is that?
We have not considered it, but I've had some discussions with all, adding a semaphore of that location. City Hall and Community Center there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You haven't brought that up, sixty there.
Nobody else wants to?
I, I'm in agreement, that's a good location, and I would like to see them together.
Yeah, I agree. Too. Just, I agree. I think, I, I, what I'm thinking is, we have more flexibility on the location where the community center is now because of the size. And we own all of that property.
Questions?
Gary, the, the land to the, what would it be to the? No, by the current community center to the east of the, that's just sitting bare there that we, that we have to mow. Is there an issue with Robin, their building on that or?
Not, oh, we're.
Okay, that, that wasn't all. We thought about selling that too, but we'd want to be.
Well, that's, you were wondering if it's part of the tragedy.
Yeah.
No, the tragedy was for the, for what?
For that.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, Ricky?
If we pick that site, where will we put the communities out there while we're?
City auditorium. I think we could use it for, for a year.
I couldn't.
Boy, don't we, it's, it's empty right now.
I don't think it's safe.
Because it's a lead?
Yeah.
No, the lead levels are not, because we just had that report. We don't, haven't been able to give you yet.
Yeah, it, it would also be like quasi unusable in the summertime if you got really hot. It doesn't have, doesn't have A C.
It doesn't have A C.
So you'd have to open up the doors and have a fan in it. So if you have people in it in the summertime, it's not going to work.
Right.
Well, we can, this place over here too requires.
Yeah, use this place.
Yeah, Julie wants to talk.
We, we, just so you guys know, we did, we did look at an option once, try to keep the community center bill further to the south behind it. But it just felt like we were pushing the building way to the back, so anyway, we kind of abandoned that idea.
But we kind of went with Ron's idea, say at the podiums, you know, we'd have to tear it all down. Julie, you've been waiting.
Yeah. I, I'm kind of leaning towards back to the, the mall location, just because of the cost. I just, I just feel like this is a huge, huge financial impact on the taxpayers. I'm also, you know, people are saying, what, you know, what happened with that location? Why didn't we, why aren't we going with that? And, and even the senior population, that is the major user of the community center right now. They, they're still in favor of that location. And it does open up opportunity for other programming close to the schools and the location. I, I just, for the cost, I'm, I'm just leaning that way right now.
Mayor, can I say one thing?
Yes, go ahead, Bruce.
Again, I have nothing against Deion and his team and what they're proposing. At the end of the day, it's what are you getting? It's hard, it's hard to compare apples and oranges. You know, we're giving you prices of what these facilities cost to build. We know, statewide, once went off. You know, you don't, until they put together some solid numbers, until they go through and understand this planning and kitchen equipment you need for the senior, you know, for community center and all this other stuff, which we have in this estimate. You just don't know if it's an apples to apples comparison. So I'd say, I'll, I'll tell you, then one thing every day. To remodel a building is definitely cheaper than building a building. That's, that's clear, I would tell that to anybody every day. But if you have to replace your roof, if you have to replace mechanical system, systems, if you have to cut in windows to add glass to, to a solid wall, that starts starting to callystide. So I think the cost comparison, Councilwoman, while I respect that it probably is cheaper, I don't think anybody knows what that true cost savings is at this point.
And, and I would agree with you. I think, to me, what it's going to come down to is the philosophy of what do we want it to look like? And, you know, new and architecturally captivating is, is nice. But practicality, I just feel like we could go with the, and I know it won't be possibly, you know, wouldn't be as, as spectacular as a new building. But I think it could work, I think we could make it look good. I, I'm just, even if they, you know, at one time they came in at ten million. Even if it doubled to twenty million, we're still a long way from thirty-one to thirty-five million. An hundred and twenty-three dollar impact on a homeowner is a lot.
Hey, I'm going to go around this way. Are you done, Julie, or did you?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, now go to Vicki, then Tom, then Audrey.
Okay, so my answer to that would be, if we put it in the mall, it's already forty years old, how much longer?
Fifty.
Fifty, how much longer can be expected to last? I think we'll be looking at building a new one in thirty years if we do that. If we build a new one now, hopefully we'll have it for, you know, seventy years or more. So I'm thinking long-term, I'm thinking of our grandchildren, our, our children, you know? They won't have to think about this for a very long time if we do it right, right now.
I was just going to follow up, see, that's kind of what she brought up. She kind of brought up part of what I was going to do. But we have Ron here, you know, he's in the construction business. He could probably give the laydown on what construction cost would be on remodeling fifteen to brand new, you know, a long-term value, say, well, Ron, hold it for a year.
I can just tell you that remodeling costs a lot of money, a lot more per square foot than building a condo. It's a given. One other thing I thought of, talking to Justice here, was you could have the fire department practice on the community center. Demolish half of it, saves money. They'd be more than happy to do that, they'd have houses. And actually, people get a tax rebate for their practice on it. So they could demolish half of it. Saves some money.
Audrey?
They'd love it.
Audrey?
I support the, the site out at the.
I can't hear you.
I support the site out at the community center. I am surprised at some of the costs and, you know, we've been working on City Hall for a long time and to think about investing the same amount of money in a community center as we're talking about or City Hall, it's a lot of money. But I, if we don't do it right, then just don't do it. You know, fix, we can fix things. We've been, I don't know how much money we spent in City Hall this last year. We did remodeling in there. Maybe there's other things in, even to go out to twenty-twenty-five, there's probably things that need to be done in the meantime, kind of thing. But I don't support the mall. I think the mall's already old. I don't think it's any easier. It certainly isn't the center. I live out that direction. It's the back side, it's not the front side. It's just as hard to drive down Wilmer Avenue and Nineteenth Avenue as it is to drive down Highway Seventy-One for seniors. There's lots of, lots of issues. So I think we can work to make it safer to drive to the community center, especially now since I think we have more control over that, we found out. I think we need to work to do some of those. But I support, I support us being forward-thinking and finding a way to be able to build at that location out at the community center.
Justin, did you hear that?
Yeah, no, I had to ask Jared the same question that Vicki kind of brought up earlier back when we were here. From an engineering standpoint, what's the life expectancy of this building? So I'm just wanting to put him on the spot so you won't be doing what I heard.
So basically, what we discussed, tip-up panel construction, and Bruce can substantiate this, but I mean, it's a, it's a common building type of material for, or building construction technique. I believe there's tip-up panels over here right around. That's how this was built. Really what we talked about is the panels and the barge joists, provided there's not moisture problems with it. From a structural integrity standpoint, I mean, those are long-lasting materials. The issue, I think, becomes, once you tear into that building, similar to what we experienced out here, what's under that roof and what's contained within all that, that's the big unknown. And certainly, a structural engineer and architect would need to take a look at that building. But from the, the concrete and the footings, like Ron had said earlier, those don't, I mean, they're going to last long. It's just all the other stuff that comes into it that Rob could tell you millions of stories about, but we're not going to get into that today.
I think you had said something to really, you know, there are unknowns, but would you guess would be there fifty years?
Panels and car joints, if they don't get wet, I would guess they would be there.
You ever think more?
I mean, I think for where I'm at, like, I feel like, very much like I'm looking at apples and oranges and being asked to, to compare. No, I can't go so far as to say that, like, I'm sure one or the other at this point. I agree with what Julie was saying earlier too, like, it's a significant cost difference. And that's something that I want to take seriously. At the same time, I think there's a lot of real positive things about that location across from Robins Island.
Rick or Mike, do you want to weigh in?
I prefer the mall area. People can get to it a little easier. You got a school to the north, you got that school east. It is a community center, so school kids can walk there and, and use it. There's going to be some new apartments opening up south of the mall. People can walk to it, so. That was my preferred site back in ninety-two when I first ran. The senior citizens was looking for a location. And I would have gone there except the Elks Building came available. Senior citizen bought that. Current City Hall, that was the clinic. And it's lasted quite a long time, so I'm, I'm sure the mall was built better than the clinic was. Just me?
Mike? I would go with the Robins Island. And I don't have a concern about traffic because I, I believe that they will get traffic control out there. We build a community center at City Hall, that they will get that out there. They'll do some traffic studies out there. So I don't have a completely big concern about that. I have talked to a lot of seniors, I've heard of them, the veterans on coffee time. They're pretty excited about the opportunity to have a community center out there with the City Hall. They thought that was a good idea, people that I talked to, put it that way. And so, but I just wanted to get something done because we sit here, and I do this, and we do this, and we do this. And the cost just keeps going up and up and up and up over years and years and years.
Well, this took before we were on the council.
Yeah, I know, I know.
That's what was going on.
And, and that's what I've heard from the other council members that are gone. They said, we keep delaying this and the crisis keeps going up. So we need to do something, so that's all I'm saying. Let's just get off and do it.
I, I don't have a vote in it, but it sounds to me like it's either the current community center location or Candy Mall, J C Penney. I like Julie, I, I looked at the cost and I just think, boy, if we can do it for that much less, that's a nice advantage. But then I hear the argument about how long is it going to last? It's at a good investment to invest in an existing fifty-year-old property. But those are the two locations that I had come down to in my own mind. Well, after hearing Jared, Jared's reply to it, I, I think I, I'm leaning towards Robins Island. I think that's where I would vote if we were going to vote this, after hearing what Jared or Jared had to say about it.
You do need to find out how many dollars of tax it's going to involve also per year, taking that off the tax rolls.
Right. Well, we do know that there would be taxes taken off the tax rolls, that we know for sure.
Be the next step.
But you would have an increase with whoever purchased. Wouldn't it just even out if some, if we sold the community center?
We're not going to get nowhere over a million bucks for that property.
No, the community center is not in good shape.
But the. Yeah.
Yes, it would just be the value of the property and there's none of the property there to give you a million bucks. Because that's a problem with.
That's why we put on moss was because it was too deteriorated on the bottom. All the skills were out now.
And the trusses. There's issues with the trusses or the beams. They're oxidizing.
I got a question. I brought the idea to Mr. Walker in September. Habitat for Magic Building on First Street is for sale.
The old Goodwill?
The old Goodwill. They were asking a million eight for it. And those, that little strip mall with three renters, tenants, went with it. No one ever got back to me. Justice was on that call because I gave them the number of the agent. I think we should probably look into that first, first, uh, community center.
Where there's much parking there, there.
There is to the west.
I think we should use the land we already have, like those current communities. And also, it's like right across from our great Robins Island with the park and everything. And I hope he's moving out here. Yeah, and there's just so much stuff there. And when people come into town on that, it's going to look so nice.
What are we really talking about, the difference in cost between J C Penney and?
Well, the other thing about that difference in cost, like Bruce said, we don't know what the soft cost is. And we don't know what the cost of building out the interior. This is just the cost just to build the walls, doesn't include, and it might include HVAC, we don't know. We got to have HVAC issues. Current HVAC is not designed to have rooms. It's designed to be a big open space.
Chop up the floor?
What, Ron?
You have to chop up the floor of the Penny Building. You got electrical plumbing heating.
I guess.
Wouldn't you have to do that at the community center now then, keeping the foundation?
Well, I'm sure you would.
Yeah.
But you'd keep, you'd keep the present foundation, the frost footings, those would be kept.
Audrey?
I, I, I feel like the two things we're talking about, they've spent, it's detailed. We could probably cut back on some of the things that they're talking about. We have absolutely no idea what it would cost us to go to the mall right now. They threw out, well, we'd have to do, we'd have to do this, you know, is it, is it interior? What are they going to do? I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, but I thought we made this decision twice before that we weren't going to do the mall. And so to go back, I mean, if you, if you want to go back and have them do a detailed estimate, it might be five, six, seven thousand dollars more. We don't know that, so how, how can we do a comparison?
Sell you more?
I don't think it's fair, I don't think it's fair.
I'm wondering if we can make a motion, a work session.
No.
No. Can we?
No.
Can I?
The council can, but it would have to be, you're, you're allowed to, it is a, it is a public meeting. You are a quorum of the council. But that's up to the council. But that's up to council procedure, that's a procedure. But a motion can be offered. Really?
I don't support that. This is a work session for us to get information. We need to make a decision and then it needs to go to a council meeting.
Carl?
I'd just like to throw my support out there for the, the Robins Island site. Yeah, it's going to be a little more money probably, but we, we get brand new, we get what we want. It is kind of the regional center, is what the city wanted, Robins Island to be kind of the focus of, of the city. And, and I just believe that going to the mall, we're confining ourselves. It's, there's some positives to it. Cost-wise, more effective maybe, but long-term, I just feel like Robins Island would get more bang for our buck.
I'd like to make a motion to put this on agenda for this coming Monday, for us to decide the location between Robins Island and the mall. That way we have narrowed down, it'll be this Monday, it's about a week away. And then, then we can finally move forward with this.
I'll second that.
I'm going to abstain because I don't believe we should be making a motion at the work session. Work sessions are not for council decisions.
All right. Can I ask you a question, like, do we need a motion?
Yes.
Can we have a consensus?
You can have a consensus. Put it on the agenda, yes. You can have a consensus.
I would point out, Audrey, incidentally, this is, this is not how we've operated in the past. And so I'm concerned about the precedent. I think we have a consensus and we can get it on the agenda and that's what Tom's asking to do, so.
I'd like to see it on the agenda for, for Monday that we.
Well, I think if we have a consensus that we're going to make a decision on Monday, we're good to go.
Yep, I'll pull back my motion then.
Appreciate that.
So we have a consensus. We have a consensus, okay. Julie? Julie, is it okay with that?
I'm good with that decision.
All right.
On Monday.
If there's any additional information you need from us, we can buy anything and stuff the dug as. Anything we can provide, we will get it done.
Thank you.
Been fun.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for your turn.